Oh, Gordon's in a new library tonight.
As I am.
You know Brad, it's in one of my other homes.
Yeah, I get it. That looks like your English estate maybe built in fourteen hundreds.
Actually, that was the fifteen hundreds.
Who's, who's keeping track?
Yeah, details.
Country here or there?
Greg, do you want to give the Zoom speech?
I would be happy to.
Thank you.
Evening, everyone. I'm interim city administrator Greg Elliott. I'd like to address a few things before the mayor requests the roll call. This is a pre-meeting, which is a forum for the city commission to discuss various issues and topics. But to the meeting, we asked the participants mute themselves to allow the commissioners to have their discussions and to minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. An opportunity for public comment will be provided at the end of the meeting. Participants will be invited at that time to undue and address the commission if they wish. Talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people who fill the screen with objectionable content. This occurs during our meeting tonight. We will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. Attendees can reconnect via the same link. We will also turn over the video of the meeting to law enforcement for investigation. Hope to conduct our meeting free of any interruptions, but will early shut down the meeting at this. Thank you all for participating. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting over to you and ask for a roll call.
I called to order the August seventeenth, two thousand twenty Adrian City Commission pre-meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor He.
President.
Mr. Hill. Mr. Roberts.
Present.
Mr. Watson.
Present.
Mr. Strayer.
Present.
Mr. Gau.
Present.
All commission members present.
I'll hand it over to you, Greg.
Okay, so for our first item on tonight's pre-meeting agenda, we have the, an update for you on the Quanis Trail Authority. As you may know, the city administrator for our city is constituted Nathan and I, the city manager for Tecumseh and the township supervisors of Raiz and Adrian Townships, been meeting along with a representative of the Quanis, Quanis, who is available to here with us tonight to discuss formation of authority to take a control of the Quanis Trail, both on its current alignment and future extensions, and take care of that for the future. And we have the document just about worked out. That current draft of it is in your packets, which we hope to be the final drafts as far as the participants on that, that group are concerned, it is the final draft. And with that, I will turn it over to Dusty to tell you how we got there and where we hope to go.
Under the terms of office I just mentioned would be the length of time. And then, of course, the Quanis person would be at the pleasure of the Quanis Club and the approval of the other four members. We are starting this off with a three-year run, so that we don't have, we're not going to have different seats with one year, two year, three year terms. We want to get this up and running over a three-year period of time to prove that we can work great together as municipalities, not only to lower maintenance costs, but to gain pride in each of the municipalities as well, over their section of the, of the trail, if you will. You know, years ago, this was created from rails to trails, and city of Adrian and Ted Durson, and a number of other people, Ray Moxey, really took, took this and ran with it, and there was just tremendous development of the trail all the way up and through Raizon Township, about one and a half miles short of hitting Tecumseh. And back then, a lot of people were like, you guys are just taking over, you own this, this strip of railroad track, you guys are just pushing your way through into the townships, and it was looked at differently then. It was looked at like, you know, what are you guys going to do, leave us with it, or the like. Today, I have to tell you, everybody's at the table, and everybody's excited to talk about how we can work together as municipalities and the Quanis Club of Adrian. Awesome. Thank you all for having me. Can everybody hear me fine?
Yes.
Each, we will meet every other month, starting in January, March, May, July, September, and November will be our annual meeting, at which on each annual meeting, we not only will have brought the budget back to each of you, but a full write-up of all the activities that we've been able to pull off together as a group. So each year, you'll get a full detailed breakdown of everything that we're doing, and showing the successes we had, and the savings that we may have and the like. We were able to hire a general manager, should we get to that point. We have, we are part of the Open Freedom of Information Act, so we're going to have open meetings. Those meetings will be announced. The city of Adrian, Greg talked about, we talked about maybe the city of Adrian still maintain leadership role on that, and hosting those meetings, and it'll be determined where we meet when those days come. This is where the meat of it is, it's the proposed budget. We look back at Matt's cost of maintenance throughout the trail, all the way up to Raizon Township, all throughout the city, and it appeared it was somewhere around eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars on an annual basis to be able to, to maintain that as it is. Today, we would have had made a proposal that we would have a hundred thousand dollar budget to start. And the way to break down, as you can see on page eight, would be fifty percent of the city of Adrian, twelve and a half, if you come to twelve and a half, figure charter, Raizon twelve and a half, and the Quanis Club would be responsible for twelve and a half percent, which is twelve thousand five hundred and fifty thousand. And that budget, we would have to be off and running this next year, two thousand twenty-one, and really by the end of two thousand twenty-one, want to prove to you that not only did we maintain the trail at a very, very high level, but we also did it for less money, and we believe we can do that by shared resources, by communication, and by being able to really be a lot more effective as a group. So I guess I come to you today to look at those arts corporation. If you have any questions for me and Greg, we've been working on this for quite some time, and I do believe we have a very good draft on how to move forward.
I have a question. Sure. Dusty, what, how did you guys come up with your breakdown? And I guess where my mind is on that hundred thousand dollar breakdown, as this, this trail progresses or matures and expands, where's the mechanism to maybe adjust and expand on these budgets in terms of, hey, you know, all of a sudden, we've got twenty percent in Raizon Township, twenty percent in Adrian, or in Adrian Township and so on? Is there, I didn't see a mechanism when I read through here to give us flexibility on this. I just read this rather than having, you know, something already in here to review, maybe on the budget cycle of, hey, twenty percent of that trail is now in charter, the charter township.
So Greg, you could probably answer as well as I do, but I think at any given time, we could amend the Articles of Incorporation based on the majority of the, of the people sitting at the table.
No, that's, that's right. And so if there were a significant extension, then part and parcel of that would be an appropriate amount to us to sharing percentages, but kind of set up.
Would it make any sense to, to incorporate that into the budget process of a review or, or putting something in here related to how we came up with these splits? Because this, this is, this is an area of my concern, though I, let me, let me preface, rewind. I love this. This is awesome. This is great for the trail. This is great for the clubs. This is great for the municipalities. But, but let's, let's write this as good as we can, so we don't have to amend it. But let's, can we do some more homework now, or do we just roll with this and, and go with amendments?
Oh, here's what I foresee, at least from what I can see happening at this point in time. So right now, the city of Adrian has, has done everything. They've paid for it. They've taken care of it. They've taken on the responsibility from head to toe. And as a matter of fact, even in the, as we move towards this connection to Tecumseh, you guys made a big promise, and by supporting our endeavor, the endeavors to go out and raise the funds and make it happen, that connection to Tecumseh. So I appreciate what the city of Adrian has already done, just to get us to this point. I would say to you that some of the work that we did was to try to break down some barriers, perceptions that were taking place up there. So this one felt the most comfortable to all of us, when you think about the size of Adrian, and how much of the trail it winds inside the city, how much control they had over it, and then, okay, can we get Adrian Township to give twelve thousand five hundred year, or can we give the city Tecumseh to do that as their initial step, because they've never really been in the game, they don't have the trail, Quanis Trail yet? And can we get Raizon Township, which is the more sensitive of it, wanting to get them to join, join the group? So we started off saying, you know what, this will at least alleviate the city budget by fifty percent to start. But let's say that Tecumseh connection goes off, just as I expected, when we're getting pricing within, within the next day or two, and what that's going to cost, the whole thing from top to bottom. We've been able to figure out how to put it in the right way, and, and so everything's coming down to the details right now on that. As, as we move there, just imagine as, as Dan Swallow continues his commitment towards the trail, and he's going to have a lot more, you know, it's going to be connected to a city, it's going to hit Calzone Park and, and all that. But at the end of the day, I think what we hope to have happen, and we don't want to get, you know, you can say this, and it's going to come back around. Every time somebody hears the word authority, they think taxing authority. And in this case, it is a non-taxing authority. But in three years from now, if we've proven, if we've proven that we can do this together, if we've proven that we can save money, and that we can make investments and make big things happen with the trail, I think it'll be at that time that we'll go back to our constituents and ask them, is it worth some sort of small mileage, maybe a quarter mileage of some sort, and these geographical boundaries for now, it could expand, at which point the, the authority would take ownership of the trail. It would be a completely different way of doing it. We would actually own the trail, and the authority would manage it, and it would be released from the city's responsibilities. Did I say that right, Greg? I think that's right.
Yeah, no, that's exactly right. And, and the point is a good one. We're getting our foot in the door here, so to speak. Fifty percent is far better than a hundred percent, so.
And I like the, I like the longer vision. That gives me, I mean, if, if we've got the plan to keep evaluating this to get to something to take to the taxpayers, possibly, or, or even just going this way. I'm just, I was thinking for efficiencies, rather than going back for votes, is it something that can be evaluated on an annual basis, on some kind of logic, to, to lay out what that breakdown is? If we're going to commit this for three years, this is fantastic as well.
Yeah, see, what I envision is that, that first year, we're going to see costs. Yeah, see what I envision is that, that, that first year, we're going to see costs lowered. Because I can just see DeCunsee bringing out some of their stuff and grabbing onto their side of the game, you know, to their new, their new trail. I can see right, you know, now that Raisin Township's involved, that they'll participate in helping, not keeping the trail up to par because they're a part of it. I think Adrian Township will act in the same fashion. And I think when we come back with that year-end review and telling you what we've accomplished, I think that's where you're going to see the value. And, and I think even at that time, we'll have to ask ourselves, do we want to make the twelve-five contribution? Because you guys came in under budget. What do we want to do? But at the moment, we are asking for that for three years, just so I can be clear. But you will get a full review from us each year after November.
I guess where I'm at with the Dusty is that I, I read over your Articles of Incorporation. I think that, uh, I appreciate the hard work that everybody's putting into this. I think that breaking, breaking down the barriers of the city, because there's a lot of, uh, old guard around that, that, that built a wall around the city and then, uh, everybody else fighting for themselves. That's where giving four municipalities at the same table. And not only get the same table, but also kicking in funds is, is, is not an easy task. But I think everybody knows what kind of resource the trail is and, 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 and now they want to actually put skin in the game. So I think this is a win-win for everybody. Um, talking to some, uh, one of the township supervisors, he's excited about it. Um, I think this is going to be a, a, a way to develop and connect all of our communities. But also, like you said, take some pride in each individual township. Um, because we all enjoy this resource and, and to see it grow and to see just the progression of it, I think is awesome. So I'm thinking back on Commissioner Watson's comments, this is great. Um, and, and then, uh, I can't wait to see what the future holds, but I fully support as is.
Thank you. So what this is, is the pre-meeting. So I think what will happen in your first meeting in September, Greg will draft the actual Cards of Incorporation. He gave some exhibits, examples of each of us adopting a very municipality. I believe the City of DeCunsee is doing what we're doing tonight, an introductory type, um, presentation. I think Dan's doing that right now. Um, the Township of Raisins having one on Thursday night. Getting the attorney that's been working with us, Bob Davis, has been fantastic. He had lots of experience in creating authorities. He was given to us through Bob Ford. And he really, we went through about four or five, maybe six meetings of just sifting through this so that we wouldn't have any pitfalls. So I, I expect that we'll be back at the commission meeting on that night to make sure you, if you have any questions or concerns or anything that you've heard. Um, we want to make sure we address it, that we're fully transparent and that this, uh, this thing will work.
Anything more on that? As Dusty said, is that if all goes smoothly with the other municipalities, then we would hope to be able to have a resolution for you in your regular meeting next time. Next up on our pre-meeting agenda is the Parks Ordinance discussion. We made some tweaks to our, the portion of our city code that relates to the use of public parks to help with the, uh, efforts we're putting forward to, uh, create, uh, miss youths, uh, some persons of, of those areas. And, uh, I think Marissa is here to explain what those particular amendments are. And I think this will also then appear on your regular meeting agenda tonight. A little out of order, the way we usually like to do it, but there was some sense of.
Good evening, everyone. Um, Greg is correct. We've seen a great increase in the use of our parks, uh, both due to COVID and people needing to find something to do outside, um, and keep themselves active. The summer months always bring an increase. And also we've seen an increase in kind of the transient population in the area. So we've been talking about what we can do to make, um, make this work for everyone involved, make the parks a friendly place to be. Um, and also keep them cleaned up, beautified, and make everyone feel comfortable when they're using the parks. So Greg put together a group and we've been meeting for the last couple of weeks. And one of the things, um, we have an entire plan put together, but one of the things that we looked at doing is amending our ordinance on conduct in parks. And the very first amendment is really simple, and that's just in section sixty-two forty, under use of parks. Um, you will see that in bold, we've added public trail. We had some discussion of, um, about this and feel that the trails are kind of fall into part of the parks. They connect the parks. And so we've added that in with the public parks and playgrounds. And then we've, um, proposed a change. Our park hours have been from, um, they've been closed from eleven PM to six AM. We've proposed a change for that language to read from sunset to sunrise, so that it's flexible during, um, the seasons. So when it gets darker earlier in the wintertime, the parks would close earlier. When it gets dark later in the summertime, the parks would close later. The reason for, um, the sunset language being that it's still kind of that dusky time of day. And officers and/or park employees have the opportunity to kind of scan the parks and make sure that they have been, have gotten everyone out before it gets too dark for them, um, to see. So that, that's really changes in the original ordinance is that adding public trail and then changing the times to actual sunrise to sunset. But then you'll see that we added an entire section to the ordinance at the end of this article. And that's section sixty-two forty-four entitled camping. We did not have an ordinance that, um, related to camping or, um, the municipality. And so we looked at what other, uh, areas have done and how effective that's been. And we decided that the best proposal to bring to you was to, um, get some guidelines with regards to camping within the city limits. You'll see that we've, um, included definitions on what camping means, what a shelter includes, um, what it means to reside or dwell. And then we have also included, um, how this is applied to public property as well as private property and what the violation would be. With regard to public property, it simply says that it's unlawful for any person to camp or establish shelter upon public property without express written consent of authorized official. Um, we've talked about too, the possibilities that our parks are sometimes used for special events, like when we have the, um, bike groups that come through and they want to camp overnight, um, and other special events that might occur. And that's what this express written consent would be for. They could get a permit that would go through Matt and the Parks and Recreation Department. And a permit would be issued. And for special events, we could still have camping, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, those type of things. Um, so long as there was express written consent. But in general, it would be prohibited. This also applies to private property, that it would be unlawful for any person to camp or establish shelter upon private property without the writ, without the consent of the property owner. This would be helpful for our local business owners, um, who may find people camping out on their properties near their buildings. Even if the buildings are, uh, whether they're abandoned or whether they're operating right now. But they would have some type of authority to ask police to have those people move from the property if they do not have consent. And it also would cover the kind of far-stretched idea that if people can't camp out in parks and so on, maybe they're going to choose an empty lot next to your residence. And that's your actual personal property. Then you would have also authority to say this is prohibited. Um, a little bit beyond just the standard trespass. And then a violation of that, um, article would be a civil infraction. So we know that because this activity is more common to take place in the summer months. We wanted to get this idea before you right away. Um, so instead of following the usual protocol, as Greg said, where we bring it to your pre-meeting. And then next time you would have a first reading and then the next time a second reading. We wanted to put this on for first reading on your agenda this evening. Um, so that hopefully in two weeks, we may be able to, um, move forward with this. And we still would have to take into consideration the amount of time it takes for it to be published and become effective. So we would still be looking at, uh, middle of October before this would actually become effective. So that's the reason for, um, kind of putting it before you. So quickly, I just wanted to point out that in addition to the ordinance, we also have already talked about signage that would be posted in the parks and on the trails, so that people would be immediately notified of this change in, um, the hours and the prohibition of camping or dwelling. And also addressing them, um, depositing any garbage or waste in public places, because that's been an ongoing issue. But we already have an ordinance in place for that. We have a plan in place for, of collecting abandoned items. So if they were found, it wouldn't be that people just lose everything that they have. There would be on that signage would tell them that their items could be stored for a maximum of five days. And that they can claim their property by calling a specific number. And that would all be posted in many places throughout parks and trails, so that they would be, um, duly notified of what's going on. In addition to that, we recognize that the transient population has, um, some serious challenges going on. And so administration and the APD have worked together to develop a resource card that is pocket-sized and they will be laminated. And it, it lists all the resources available for shelter, for food, for community mental health services, medical services. All those type of things, as well as the number again to call if they needed to claim their personal belongings. And those would be placed in boxes like we use outside of City Hall. Um, similar to when you pick up an information sheet about a house that's for sale. And it's in one of those plastic enclosed boxes to protect it from the elements. Those would be placed in the parks as well. And people would be able to pick that information up and keep a laminated card, giving them all of those resources available. Um, and we continue to work on this plan to expand it, figure out what else we can do. But these are just kind of some first steps that, um, we're putting into place. Does anyone have questions for me about the ordinance or the timing or anything like that?
No, I, I don't have questions, uh, about the ordinance in particular. I do appreciate you working on this so quickly. Um, after it came to our attention that we were experiencing quite severe issues. I do have a question about the farmer's market area. Will this information be put in that area? Which has also experienced some transient people hanging out there or?
I'm having a really hard time hearing you, Commissioner Roberts. So I, I didn't catch which area you were asking about.
The farmer's market.
Thank you. Um, I'm certain.
I'm not sure if that's, if that's your computer or mine. Is everyone else hearing that? That creates severe feedback.
Yeah, it seems to be on your end.
On Camara's end or my end?
On, on your end, Commissioner Roberts.
Okay. I, I might log off and try and log back on.
Okay. Um, to answer your question really quickly though, I'm certain that, um, those information cards could be put in the farmer's market area. Um, we did, we didn't include the word public parking lot. I went back and forth with whether to include that, but I felt like it was going to be really difficult for enforcement purposes, because you don't know if someone's car just got stuck there overnight. Or if they're going to be parked in the parking lot after dark, because they're at a commission meeting and my car is going to be parked there on a Monday night while I'm still at Chambers and things like that. But we certainly can, um, we certainly can still post the signage, letting them, um, know that they can't camp there at the farmer's market. And we can, um, definitely have the information about claiming belongings and the resource cards made available. And, um, I know I can see that Matt is on this meeting, so I'm certain he's making notes to help get that added to his list.
Greg, this question is probably more for you. It's not necessarily on this ordinance, but it goes along with this. Have we figured out all the areas, um, where electricity is being, um, tapped into? Because I know that that's been in several of these, uh, spots, which is why there is this transient population hanging in certain areas.
Uh, Parks is working on, uh, powering those down and, and those places where that's been a, a issue, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I have seen, I spent some time with Chief Emmerich on Friday afternoon. I've seen those cards. They are very well done. They are very thorough in the information. Um, we did wander around town a little bit and, uh, handed those out to, to some residents. Um, and they were very appreciative of that. They, um, Chief does a very nice job engaging the transient population. And, um, they, uh, they, he is very well received when they, when he approaches them. Um, and I think those cards might make a bit of a difference.
Thank you, Commissioner Watson. And we really appreciate when you or any of the commissioners have a chance to see things, um, on your, on your own time, because that really helps you to understand the, the actions that we're taking. So we really appreciate you taking your time out to do that on Friday.
Nothing else on that? Next, uh, item is also in your court, Tamara, so it's the commission vacancy.
Okay. Well, after almost an entire year of vacancies, we have, um, successfully passed the charter amendment. Uh, thank you to all of our community and, um, voters for supporting that. It was overwhelming support on the vote and we're really appreciative of you standing behind the need to, to change the charter. So at this time, the commissioners have some work to do and you have some decisions to make. Um, you've got about sixty days, um, from the time that this law goes into effect to get the seat filled or to call a special election. The law or the election has now been certified. It was certified on Friday. Robin got word. We are waiting for a copy of that to come over from the county. And as soon as Robin has a copy, it will be sent out, um, to the state of Michigan. Once that's sent out to the state of Michigan, the law is effective. And the law becomes effective at the next regular meeting of the city commission. You will need to make a decision on how that position will be filled. So your next regular meeting will be your September third meeting. At that time, you will need to decide one of two ways for the position to be filled. One, you can call a special election to fill the vacancy for the balance of the unexpired term, which would be until November of two thousand twenty-one. That's when this particular seat would expire. Your second option would be to appoint an eligible person to hold office until the Monday following the next regular city election, at which election, that position would be filled, um, through the election process for any of the unexpired term. This would not apply to the election this November, because all of the deadlines have passed for petitions to go in and those type of things. And so the next regular city election is actually November of two thousand twenty-one, when the seat expires. That means that here's what your two timelines would look like. If the commission chooses to call a special election to fill this seat, you would need to pass a resolution by the first meeting in March that would actually call the special election, March twenty-twenty-one. Meaning the seat will remain empty from now until this process is complete. If you call the special election by March of two thousand twenty-one, then that will still give approximately six or seven weeks for individuals who are interested in running for the position to fill out their petitions and get them into the city clerk by the deadline, which would be approximately the third week of April of two thousand twenty-one. After that, um, we could have a special election in August. That would cost the city several thousand dollars. Um, and that person who is elected in August would then hold that seat until November of the same year. And then they would run for reelection, because they would be elected to hold that seat for the balance of the unexpired term, at which time they would have to run for reelection. So essentially it would take you from now until August to fill the seat. And then that person would have to run for election again, or new people would run. So there would be two elections for that seat next year, one in August, one in November. If you choose the other path, which is appointment, that means that once we receive this certification from the county, it would be sent into the Secretary of State this month. You would then have a resolution on your agenda on your September seventh meeting. And I apologize earlier, I said your first meeting was the third, but it's the seventh. On your September seventh meeting, you would have a resolution to, um, select to appoint for that position. After which I've looked at our history and our precedent, and you usually hold a thirty-day window for applications to be turned in. So you would probably hold a thirty-day window open. That thirty-day period would end approximately the first week of October of this year. You would then likely call a special meeting the week of October twelfth for your interviews. You would then likely call a special meeting the week of October 12 for your interviews. And then on the October 19 meeting of this year, you would have a new commissioner in place that would have been chosen through the appointment process the week prior. That person would take office and likely be sworn in that week. And then they would hold that office until November 2021. They could choose next year to run to be elected or they could choose to just hold the office for a year and let others run to be elected. That would be your timeline. Any questions about that? So if any of you want to shoot me individual emails, kind of giving me an idea where your mindset is at, we will prepare resolutions, a resolution for the next meeting for you all to make a decision on whether or not you're going to decide to appoint someone or whether you're going to call a special election.
Tamara's.
Yes, Commissioner Strayer?
I don't think our next meeting will be on the 7th. That's Labor Day.
You're right. So it would be the 8th. Correct. So is the Labor Day being the last weekend in August-ish? So yes, it would be on the 8th. So that's when we would have it on the agenda. And just, I think it's just really important to reiterate, not so much for the commission but for the public, that no matter what decision you make, this seat can only be filled until November of 2021, at which time, whether it's someone who was appointed or elected, that, that term still expires. And they would have to go through the election process at that time. So this is not a long-term situation that's being filled.
So we're required by law to decide within 60 days, which would be at our next meeting?
Commissioner Roberts, you're required by the charter now to decide at your next regularly scheduled meeting, which method you will use.
Right.
Then if you choose appointment, you have 60 days to appoint. And if you do not do that within 60 days, it would default and force you into a special election. If you choose special election, then you would just be waiting for the election deadlines and follow the state requirements with regards to all of those deadlines.
Okay. That's where I was, I was a little confused. I wanted to make sure we have to decide by our next regular meeting. And then after that, we have the 60 days to essentially do one or the other.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Any other questions?
There's nothing else on that. Next item is our annual ice rink discussion. We learned today that Mr. Neal is not going to be able to join us this evening. May limit the amount of discussion, but we did receive a sort of a report on this from him that I think was sent to all of you on the commission individually. And we maybe try to share that to show if you have that handy. So it's up on the screen for everybody else. Obviously, they're requesting the opportunity to do again what they did last year. Everybody will recall that there's, there was very little activity in December of last year due to the temperatures. Very little activity overall throughout the year. But we didn't have the same problems with leakage, I would say, that we had in the first year. Be a little more self-contained than it had been. Of course, it was smaller than it had been as well. Matt's on the call tonight to have particular questions. He did monitor it pretty much daily while it was up. Last year, and he did, he puts all that down periodically. I think in terms of its appearance, it worked better last year than it did the prior year. But use was pretty limited and I think he does have some use data in his report there. But I think Mary, you had also asked, this is the pre-meeting for discussion. I don't know if there's something you want to add in that regard. Mr. Neal asked that we have a decision for him at this time. Obviously, we're not bound by that, but for his purposes, organizing his class, obligations, he had hoped to know what our direction would be by September. So we don't have anything on for action tonight, but you have it on for discussion.
Can I make comments?
Sure.
As a big proponent of this in years past, I'm really glad that we did engage in this project. You know, year over year, we, we have to make investments and challenge ourselves to think differently and to stretch ourselves. And I think we did in this situation with the help and the investment of Adrian International Film Festival and the schools. You know, I'm at a spot, I've read through this document a couple of times. You know, I'm at a spot where this boils down to we can't control mother nature. We tried this. I'm again very glad that we did try it. This coming winter, I have less interest in doing this, if not no interest in doing this.
I would say the same thing. And I appreciate that Mr. Neal gave this to us now rather than in November and having us make a snap decision so that we are able to look at it ahead of time. So I agree with Commissioner Watson. Adrian is just not weather cooperative to an outdoor rink. It's just, it has not worked. And until we can find, you know, that the weather is changing so that it's colder and it's, we just, we're never going to know that ahead of time. But I just, I would not vote for this. And I did not vote for it last year either because it's just not used enough for what it, for the time and effort we put into it and the spaces. I know it was smaller last year, but the spaces that it took over, pretty, love the lights, love that part of it. It just did not get used. I walked by it nearly every single day and there was hardly any use to it.
I'd like to say that I appreciate all of the work that Adrian Film Festival put into it. And when I couldn't support it in the same spot that it has been for the last two years. The idea I love, but it would just have to be in a different location that, that didn't put a hardship on other businesses. So with that in mind, I couldn't support it being downtown again this year.
And I'm of the same thought as Commissioner Strayer. It's, I know the weather's not been cooperative and I would love to see this make it go, but just not in that spot. But I just don't even know. I'm with Commissioner Watson on that. I don't know if the weather's ever going to cooperate to make it worth it. I did not see it used. I drove by literally every night. There was a few times I did see it being used, but it was very rare. And I know the weather wasn't cooperative, but we can't control that obviously. And, and I just can't justify taking away that, those parking spots and that access to downtown for the, the usage that was actually, I mean, for that usage time of that rink. I just feel like it's not justified.
I guess I'll chime in. Again, it's like one of those things where when we adopted to go forward with last year, I wanted to give it one more year to see how we progress, see if we get more usage out of it. Again, it's one of those things where you can't control the weather, but due to the fact of just the overall contentiousness of the issue not being used as much as, as I would have seen. And again, that's no negative remark against anybody when it comes to the usage because mother nature, mother nature. But again, I, I would not support it this year coming, you know, also, so because of those reasons.
Well, I'll not be the only one who doesn't talk. So I, I agree. The usage was so low. In fact, that was one of the things that I had asked Mr. Neal for. We got a count of the parking spaces, but we didn't get a count of the number of people who actually used. And I think all of us have been by there and know that it was very little use. And I think it would be an issue for me if the city invested in even putting the rink somewhere else. Putting it somewhere else in the city isn't going to change the weather. And we're going to still be faced, potentially faced with the same thing. And if you know, we're only going to get weather, you know, cold enough weather once every four or five years. I just don't think it's worth it. So I would not be in favor of this.
Let's sell it. I mean, if we're not going to put it up anyplace, why, why just put it in the barn? I mean, that's a, it's a plastic liner. I mean, there's very possibly somebody in town that might want it for, that'd be sweet backyard rink, just on the Watson's house. But I mean, the value of it's not going to go up. And if we don't use it, and Gordon, I'm not saying I want to use it, but, but I mean, if we don't use it, we should, we should, you know, get it someplace where somebody might use it or just transfer that asset to somebody else when it's still an asset.
I agree wholeheartedly. Absolutely. That's what we should do.
Well, we can explore that. If that's, if that's your desire. If we have somebody who's interested on what basis, bring that back to you. Anything else on the ice rink?
I know a guy would probably buy it, but I'll talk you off the record on that.
See waving at us right now?
Thank you for getting that on the agenda for this evening. Appreciate it.
So one more scheduled item on our pre-meeting, which is back to you again, Tamara, for the adult use.
Okay, this one's really quick. Last meeting, I told you that we would have something on the agenda to see if we could get a special window open for adult use for those who already hold a permit. I think it was the day after that meeting, articles started coming out in the news that the MRA intends to change the requirements for adult use this November. That being said, I've been unable to get confirmation directly from the MRA. And that's the reason that I did not put anything on the agenda tonight. I don't think it would change my proposal that we should still have this special window, but I want to be sure that whatever we propose to you is in alignment with where the MRA is at with their licensing right now. The original law says that they can make, have a medical license before getting adult use for 24 months after the statute went into, after the statute was enacted. But they also have the right to lift that requirement early. Right now, what they're proposing is lifting that requirement in November, meaning that there would be individuals who do not have to have medical license first that could then apply for adult use. So I'd like to see, I'd like to get that confirmation. I did get a call back from the MRA today and we played phone tag all day. So I just don't have it confirmed yet from them, but it has been in several news articles. And just as we started our meeting, an email came in also informing me that the MRA is reducing the licensing fees for their fiscal year for 2021. Their fiscal year begins on October 1st. And so I think it would only be fair for staff to look at this reduction and see if we want to stretch the, the requirement for them to all be ready to be licensed by September 14th. If we want to stretch that out by two to three weeks. When I say reducing the fees, I'm talking tens of thousands of dollars. And so if someone has to apply this month as opposed to in six weeks, they may save $35,000 per license. So if they've got two classy grows, they could be saving $70,000 in licensing fees just by waiting a couple of weeks. So I'd really like to look into that too. And then come back to you with a proposal on when that special window should open and if all of the stipulations should still be the same.
Questions on that? Hearing none, remaining time is up for grabs, Madam Mayor.
Are there any other items that any of the commissioners would like to address or discuss?
I, I happened to be in Slovenia on Saturday morning and parked right, essentially right under a Dora sign. And it's very generic. Looks like it would have gone on, there was nothing that said it was from Slovenia. And it was about eight by five or so, just posted on, just a pole right at the, right at the northern entrance, kind of going up into Michigan, right there. So that was the first time I'd actually paid attention and seen it, even though I'd been on that road hundreds of times. So it is, they do have the signs up and I did want to talk to, I know Dave, you're on this. Have we talked about like where the signs are going to actually be posted? What are they going to be on, on special poles or are they just going to be on, I don't even know, on our light fixtures or what they're going to be posted?
I think we'll try as much as possible to keep them on our, on our existing sign poles so I don't have to erect new poles. They need to be around the perimeter of the district at least to let people know that that's the boundary and that they not be carrying their drinks beyond that point. That's the requirement that the Liquor Control Commission has. We, you know, we may want to have some more downtown within the center just to be sure people are letting them know that they're there or it's brand identity or whatever with, with, to explain the logo, other places. The requirement is that they be around the perimeter and Matt's been thinking about how to make those and where to put them. Turn them around really quickly when we have a decision on the logo itself.
I guess I have something real quick. I wasn't planning on having this much time left to talk, but I think that, you know, bringing in some of the commissioners right now to talk about the structure of City Hall. And, and I do City Hall as a tree, right? And us as elected officials, we are the ones who plant the tree. We flower, we water the tree and then we let the tree grow, right? We've got a big meeting tomorrow night when it comes to the two candidates for the final position. So I think this is the opportune time now is to look at how City Hall is ran from an organizational standpoint, from a department standpoint, from a high-level city official standpoint or city employee standpoint. And where I'm going with this is that I want to make sure that we're setting either Greg or Thomas up for success. What I mean by that is, is giving them the tools that they would need to run the city efficiently. But when it comes to the organizational tree and how it's structured, I think in my personal opinion, after my research over the last couple of weeks, there's some holes, right? Whether it be how it's structured, whether it be the employee handbook that was still in place from 1930. I'm being exaggerating, but it's outdated. Those are the tools that I think the new administrator would need to do his job effectively. Jobs and job titles. I want descriptions for all high-level city employees. I want to know what their job is, what they're responsible for. And so Greg or Thomas can hold those individuals accountable with those, with those job titles. And when I say I'm requesting that, I, I'm requesting clear-cut descriptions on everybody's job when it comes to what they're responsible for doing. And I just wanted to bring that up. And I think it's important for the city commission to, to give the tools and structure to city as they see, as we see fit at the collective body and then let the city run day to day on its own, right? So that's something we can all talk about individually in the next couple of weeks, kind of get. So that's something we can all talk about individually in the next couple of weeks, kind of get, make sure that we're on the same page and give them tools. But I want, I want a clear cut, fine ran, or I'm sorry, fine tube machine when it comes to City Hall. Because in my opinion, I think there's some holes. And it's our job as elected officials to get to the bottom of it and find out how we can get the tools to the next administrator so they can be set up for success as much as possible. So I'll be reaching out to you guys individually and, and we'll go from there. That's just my thoughts on that.
Commissioner, whose role do you think that is to, to, to write these up? I mean, we're kind of in a weird spot right now and I agree with you. I mean, let's, let's set it up for success moving forward. But, but in the same right, obviously we have one of our candidates who's in the interim. You know, I, and I don't think that's necessarily commissioner's role. So like what resource are we pulling to, to call this audible to get this, because I don't agree with the concept. Pretty big job.
You mean, whose role is it to set the organizational tree when it comes to responsibilities or?
No, whose, whose, whose role is it to get the job descriptions polished up and taken care of? I mean, I, I would say, you know, if you, if I'm thinking back to the organizational tree that's in place right now, there's probably what 13 to 14 just department managers and Greg or you can chime in with, with that. But, but I mean, just to get those taken care of, that's a, that's a decent sized task.
It's a huge job. I think it, I think it'd be the administrator working with us and then trying to, because like I said, we set the blueprint when it comes to how City Hall is ran and then the administrator runs the day to day. So I think it's, it's just communicating with us and saying, yeah, but it would be a huge job and.
And, and is there clear vision as to what we want that, that organizational tree to achieve? Because you can, we can say, you know, you gotta achieve certain things and we as a commission made a pretty drastic move a few weeks ago because we wanted to make sure we put an emphasis on something. That was one piece though. What's the, what, what else that that structure needs to support? So we don't have to make these moves or again, it, it is that clear vision in place right now? So we can help to facilitate and to, to make sure that tree is in place for the administrator. I'm not sure we've got the pieces in the right spot or if we have the resources to do that without, you know, it's a chicken or the egg thing. And I totally agree that this is the right, this needs to be done, but what comes first?
Good question.
Okay.
That's that. And like you said, it's, it's a lot of work. But I want to make sure that every department head is set up to, for, you know, for success. Every, every city employee is set up for success. And, and in my opinion, I think that there's some work to be done behind the scenes, whether it be Greg or Thomas or whoever, working with us as a collective body to make sure that tree is set up the correct way going forward. Because it's like now it's kind of like a reset, in my opinion, so.
Commissioner Health, are you saying that once we have a, a full-time administrator in position, then we would work with that person to sort of rewrite the job descriptions?
Right. Yes and no. I think of course we're working with the administrator to make sure that everybody's in place. Person, you know, employee A is doing X, employee Y is doing Z. And, and not one single million thing.
Thanks for managing.
Or we have, you know, department heads who, 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 who just have a vast majority of work, you know, and, 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 and you know, we don't peel some of that back. It's like eventually, you know, as, as more work comes on, I think we're setting some of our employees up for failure. And, and I think it's, and again, it could be just me, you know, but from my research over the last couple of weeks, I, I think we have to have a serious conversation on, on how do we set our administrator up? You know, whether it be communication with the city commission or not, to set up so City Hall can run more, more efficiently.
I think you'd be hit the nail on the head right there was about making sure that we set up not only City Hall and the administrator, but leads or leadership up for success, clear vision, but as well is a, is a manageable workload.
Right, right.
Right?
Yep, that's correct.
Commissioner Watson, you asked a question about whose job it is to write the job descriptions. And from my perspective, it's the commission's job to write the job description for the city administrator. And then submit city administrator working with the commission. And we've got a human resources director that ought to be doing something in, in terms of, you know, helping that out. There's some expertise there that we should be taking advantage of. So, you know, maybe, maybe Gregory and Heather Lasky can work together on the job descriptions. I'm as concerned.
Yeah.
I, I think I'm as concerned as Commissioner Health is. He called it a tree. I have an organizational chart of some kind that clearly outlines the, you know, who's, as you said, who's responsible for what? And so that we all understand that and don't have unrealistic expectations. And clearly it helps the job descriptions and us interfacing with the city administrator helps set everybody up for success.
Thanks, Commissioner Health. I look forward to hearing from you where you think that we can assist if needed.
Mary, it's really hard to hear you tonight. I don't know if you're just most soft spoken tonight or you need your microphone or what, but it's, it's really hard to hear you.
Okay, I'm sorry. I'm in my office for the first time doing Zoom because I came back to campus today. So I don't know.
Yeah, okay.
But in between meetings, I'm going to log off and log back on and see if that will help some.
The static went away after you logged off before the static all went away.
You're just really quiet, like.
I have my volume on as high as I can go, but I don't think that's it. So, let me try, I'll try something else when we're at that part.
So if there aren't any other topics, or maybe there are, but I would suggest you have two options here. You have a break or you see the folks from Lenaway now are here. Originally, we were going to have them on the pre-meeting agenda, but it looked like it was going to be too long. And so we asked them to do that as a presentation during the regular meeting, but.
I, I would prefer that they still do it during the regular meeting since it is on the agenda and the public is expecting that. That would be my thought on that in case anybody wanted to listen in. And maybe they couldn't be at the pre-meeting. So hearing no other items, I will now open it up for public comment.
Mayor and Commissioners, Don Taylor, 475 Meadowbrook Drive. First of all, with regards to the discussion just a moment ago about job descriptions, I want to say that I would agree with Commissioner Gauss that you write the job description for the city administrator. And he or she writes the job description and sets a structure for the rest of the city organization. Enough on that. You don't want a micromanagement City Hall, or I don't think you do, and I hope not. Okay? Finally, thank you for the discussion about the ice rink tonight. As you know, even though some people will say this is not the truth, I supported the ice rink, but not where it was located for the last two years. Because it impacted a building that I own along with others. And it impacted a business in that building. Let's view that as it may. We stuck with the program and quite frankly, both years it was not successful. So two things, Commissioner Watson. I thought about putting a rink in my backyard, but like you, I'm saying no, okay? I've got a pool and maybe it'll freeze, but probably not. Okay? Secondly, you know, we, we're growing and we're improving. We should think out of the box a bit. This is my wife's idea from a year ago. Let's not put on the back burner the idea that one time we had a very successful ice rink at Bone Pool. The mayor shaking your head. That was, you know, a real ice rink with the frozen system or whatever it is. If we really want to have an ice rink, let's look at that. Maybe not now, let's look at it down the road. How could we fund that? Because I'm telling you what, this town is hockey crazy. It's just absolutely hockey crazy. This would be a great opportunity to look at maybe how we expend some of our oil trust fund, private funding, the whole ball of wax. Let's think about that. And I also agree with Commissioner Watson, let's sell what we have and get our money back. Thank you.
That was twice you agreed with me. Twice.
Dave Maxwell, you may go.
I have just a few comments. I agree with Bone Pool. I think it's a fantastic idea. I'd like to thank Dusty Steele for the work he and others have done on getting this trail authority done. I didn't think it could ever happen. As far as the people park or camping in the parks, we just put a little free library in Duck Park. And the people there seem very, very calm and not threatening at all. So you may want to think about, maybe you have one place where the homeless can go and not really, unless they're really raising a lot of cane over there. You may end up causing more trouble than you're ready for. As far as this MRA, is that what it's called liquor license? It looks to me like the main people who benefit is the state of Michigan. No great surprise. And I also agree with both, who was it? Gordon and Don. You know, don't micromanage the poor new city manager. You know, job, most, a lot of people don't have job descriptions. Alan, you have job descriptions for your company. You're ahead of the game, but a lot of people don't. So, you know, get good job descriptions and use them wisely. And, and make sure that people who have those job descriptions set good annual goals and you'll get a lot more out of them than just having them, you know, at some three ring binder somewhere. So that's the end of my comments.
I'm not hearing any more public comment, so may I get a motion to adjourn?
Support.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, see everyone at our regular meeting at 7:00 PM. Thank you.
Okay, can you guys hear me now? Is that better?
Yes, you sound a lot better, Mary.
Must be my headphones. Okay, thanks.
Hey Jim.
Evening Randy.
How you doing?
Good, you?
Good.
Hey Greg, how you doing?
Hi Randy and Jim. It's good to see you guys.
You too, Mary. How you doing?
Hey Mary.
I'm doing well. Seeing you in a different light tonight, so. I've been talking with Bill Blackerby, so.
My buddy.
Still working on stuff. Still working on stuff.
He's fun. I love his dry humor. I'll tell you, it just cracks me up.
Yeah. Yep. Character.
We have some pretty interesting meetings.
I bet you do.
Who will be running our presentation tonight? Who will have control of that?
That would be me.
Okay, so we just, when we're ready for the next slide, we'll just say next?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Good evening, Jim.
Hi Gordon. Looks like you're in a law office or law.
It is. It's my private law office. Nobody around here is an attorney, but what the hell, you know?
I like it.
Thank you.
So we're not gonna have any hockey?
I'm so depressed. I've been, you know, I've been watching the NHL games and it's just not the same.
Yeah, I know. Well, Dr. D is pretty determined. We'll see what happens.
We will. Pretty much when he sets his mind to something, it usually happens.
Wouldn't you love to been on that president's call when he's the only one that voted no?
Oh yeah.
Hey Greg, we appreciate you taking your time to go through those restart grants with Tim. Thank you.
Oh, my pleasure.
Kind of like involved, you know, so that if somebody doesn't get a grant, we can help.
You can say Greg, Greg nixed you. Sorry.
Hey Greg, right after you do your little Zoom speech, before I call the meeting to order, I'm just gonna go over a way since we're staying on Zoom for a while of, to make it a little bit easier for Robin and for me and for everyone to know who's doing the motions and who's doing the seconds. We found a different way of doing it, so I'm just gonna explain that process before the meetings start. Okay? Thank you. Greg, if you'd like to go ahead and give your speech?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I'm interim city administrator Greg Elliott at seven o'clock. Like to address a few things before Mayor Heath officially calls this meeting to order. Much of the meeting, we asked that participants other than the commissioners and staff members mute themselves to allow the commission to have their discussions and conduct their business. That will also help minimize any background noise that may be disruptive. Opportunities for public comment will be offered at different points throughout the meeting. At those times, participants cannot mute themselves. An opportunity to arrest the commission will be provided. The three-minute rule continues to be in effect for the public comment period at the end of the meeting. When it is time for public comment, please identify your name and address for the record prior to making your statement. Once we formally begin the meeting, the format and structure will be the exact same as it is in person, and we will work through our agenda items as usual. All commission rules and procedures remained in effect. We talked in the past about Zoom bombing. This is where a virtual meeting is interrupted by people fill the screen with objectionable comma content. If this occurs during our meeting tonight, we will disconnect the meeting and restart after a few minutes. attendees can reconnect via the same link. We'll also turn over the video, meaning to law enforcement for investigation. We'll conduct our meetings free of this sort of interruption, but we will temporarily shut down the meeting if this happens. Our agenda is being displayed on the screen soon. If anyone wants you to access the full commission packet, can find it at www.adriancity.com. Thank you all for participating. Mayor Heath, I will turn it over to you.
Thank you. Something that our city attorney, Tamara Sennigan, and I were discussing is, and along with Robin, is that it's very difficult, especially when we have our screen up with our agenda. It's sometimes difficult to see, obviously, we can't see everyone, so we can't sometimes tell who is giving the motion and who is doing the second. And something that Adrian Public Schools has been doing since their meetings have been on Zoom, we would like to try in our meetings because it has really helped with the ease of their meetings, and that is when you give your motion, so if you give your motion, give the motion, and at the end, just say your last name. So if I were Commissioner Roberts, I'd say, I motion for blah, 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 Roberts. Okay, if, and then second, help. Whatever it might be, who's ever giving that. That way, we know exactly who is giving the motion and who is giving the second. It's just for ease of, since we're not all in the same room. So we would like to try that this evening. All right? Okay. I call to order the August 17th, 2020 meeting of the Adrian City Commission. Everyone, please rise for a moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. May I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Heath.
Present.
Commissioner Hope. Commissioner Roberts.
Present.
Commissioner Watson.
Present.
Commissioner Strayer. Commissioner Gao.
Yes, I'm here.
All commission members present.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 3rd, 2020 regular meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move to approve, Watson.
Support Roberts.
I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the August 6th, 2020 special meeting of the Adrian City Commission?
Move to approve Roberts.
Support Strayer.
I have a motion from Commissioner Roberts with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
Okay, thanks. It's kind of unstable up here right now. Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hope.
Yes.
Minutes approved by unanimous vote.
May I have a motion to pay the vouchers as presented?
I move to pay the vouchers as presented. Help?
Second, Gauss.
I have a motion from Commissioner Help with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please. I have a motion from Commissioner Hoult with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Commissioner Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Commissioner Hoult.
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts.
Yes.
Vouchers approved by unanimous.
We will now move on to communications. We will now have a presentation by Lenaway Now.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Good evening. I'm Jim Van Dorn with Lenaway Now, the executive director. I'm joined by my colleagues, Tim Robinson, our director of operations, and Randy Agala, our Align Talent Director. So thank you for having us. We've been wanting to do this for a number of years and haven't ever had that opportunity. So we're glad to be here this evening. So we can go to the next slide, please. Michelle. And the next one too. Okay, thank you. We want to talk a little bit about what Lenaway Now is and what Lenaway Now is not. We've had a number of comments over the past few weeks and so we are a public-private partnership dedicated to economic and business expansion throughout Lenaway. That means that we're available to every municipal, every political subdivision, every organization, chambers, DDAs to assist in wherever they would like.
To assist in economic development, bringing jobs to Lenaway County.
So we want to bring the economic viability in a vibrant region back to Lenaway County, and that's about doing and bringing jobs to Lenaway, and that's what we count to Lenaway County, and that's what we concentrate on. Next slide, please. We'll also talk about what we are not. Okay, we're not a downtown development authority. We're not a chamber of commerce. We're not a visitors bureau and we're not One Lenaway. And the confusing part with One Lenaway is One Lenaway is a citizens group dedicated to bringing the attention to the quality of life in Lenaway County. And we do the economic development side. One Lenaway was developed out of the growth of our sub-organizations and then they built on their own. So doing a great job for us. Next slide, please. It's all about collaboration as far as we look at it, and that's how we're going to win the economic development war that's going on between communities these days. And so, you know, besides collaborating with all of our other partners throughout the county and Adrian, we'll talk about specifically, we constantly, you know, we collaborate with the city administration, the downtown development authority, Adrian Chamber, One Lenaway and the visitors bureau. So we, we're available to each and every one of those organizations or anybody within those organizations in the Lenaway County community or the Adrian City community. Next slide. So besides that, we do. Go when Tim and I reorganized Lenaway Now, we decided to have to work together and break down the silos in order to bring the vibrant economic situation to Lenaway that we see as the future for Lenaway County. So with that, we're members and have the inter-local agreement with Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We sit on the governor's council, his kitchen cabinet, Herc Kitchen Cabinet. Regions of the state of Michigan. On top of that, we work with Michigan Works for the talent side of it and bringing dollars to our local companies and Region Two on the, on the planning side of economic development and working for the county. And then on top of that, we joined Regional Growth Partnership out of Ohio, which is a, how many counties, Tim?
Seventeen.
Seventeen county organization in northern Ohio. And we worked together with them with, and they actually have brought some business to Lenaway County and helped us fill a plant over in Morencie, Michigan. And then most recently, we joined Detroit Regional Partnership out of the growth of Detroit Regional Chamber that we used to belong to, which is a new organization headed by the key executives, a number of key executives in the southeast Michigan area. And it's an 11 county consortium taking in southeast Michigan. And, you know, it's, it's only been in existence for two years, but they already have an operating budget of well over $21 million. And that's just to market southeast Michigan and bring businesses and jobs to southeast Michigan. Next slide, please. So why do we talk about breaking down silos and working together and as a community and as a county? This is, this is just a small sampling of people that are traveling into Lenaway County and out of Lenaway County to take, to go to jobs. And of course, this one's bringing them in. It's a small sampling of the number of companies that we surveyed in Lenaway County. There's a lot more jobs than that, but it just gives you an idea of how many people are traveling into the Lenaway County area from Ohio and Monroe and Hillsdale and all the way into Wayne County. So next slide, and in the Adrian area. These are the people that are coming in and going out of the city of Adrian. Again, a small sampling, companies like Intiva and Capnek and a number of others that we surveyed and, and we just wanted to get a flavor of how economic development works because if something good happens in Adrian, it's available to all those other people. They may locate outside of Adrian, or if it happens in Hudson, it may be people from Adrian going to Hudson. So just an idea of how people are moving and how economic development is affected. Next slide. And finally, my portion of it, this is the toolbox that we have and we sent that off to each one of the commissioners. Hopefully you all received them. If you have any questions, this is for your nighttime reading before you go to bed, you can review this. But these are all the types of things that are available through Lenaway Now, whether it be for the DDA for a downtown business, whether it be for a big company coming in to create jobs and build a multimillion dollar plant, whether it be somebody that belongs to the chamber, these are all available working through us and we make them available to anybody that comes to us with that. So take a look at that. I'm not going to take the time to go through it this evening. If you have questions, we're certainly available to talk about that and we'd love to talk to you about it. If you find anything in there that you don't quite understand. So next slide. With that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you. We need to move on to the next slide. Basically, what we're talking about here at the beginning is the three legs of the economic development school. Attracting companies here, working with entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs getting companies started, and then working with existing businesses to help them grow and stay here. For this first one, we talked about requests for proposals. This is how attractions typically happen. We tend to be the primary contact for outsiders like the MADC, the Michigan Economic Development Corporation, Regional Growth Partners, Detroit Regional Partnership, to send RFPs to us. And then we forward them immediately to all the municipalities and ask, do you have a site or a building that meets these requirements? Everyone will send their data back to us. We, we send it on to the, to the client or it's a site selector in most cases, and then we sit back and wait to hear. If we can go to the next slide. Basically, once, once you've done that, and if we hear back, if we make the short, the first shortlist, we bring in the local partners again, our partners, Michigan Works, the utility companies, obviously, et cetera. And then we start working the project. It's often it's an all hands on deck kind of moment. And then, like you said, that second bullet point there, an all hands on deck moment that can go one and a half to two years. From the time we hear from a client or hear about a client for attraction to the time we actually have a ribbon cutting. It takes quite a while. That's why we like to when we, when you see our numbers later on, we typically report our, our numbers in five year increments just to, to highlight that. Again, attracting is the part that usually gets all the good press. It's fun and exciting. It's probably one of the least cost-effective methods of economic development, but still necessary. We'll get into the other a little later. So then the next part here is who is the client? This is the part that usually drives elected officials and the press nuts is confidentiality. We have to maintain it. And like you say there, we can be three to six months into the project before we even know who the project is. All we know is it's a company that wants a hundred thousand square foot building with 30 foot ceilings and wants to hire a hundred people. We want it until we figure out everything, we figure out who the client is and what all the needs are, and they figure out that they want to be in the community and the community figures out if they want that company there. Next slide.
And you did mention, excuse me, Tim, but you did mention that even though it's confidential, most of all of the times we get ahold of somebody at city hall and they're well aware of what's going on.
Yeah, yeah, like someone at city hall will know who, who's going, what, what project's going on and where we are in the, in the timeline of that project. So for this one, marketing, again, this is about aimed at attracting companies here. We do have, Lenaway Now has a strategic marketing plan. We start one, we do everyone every year and it's implemented year round. A lot of outreach to site selectors, a great deal of time and effort spent on our social media promoting quality of life, sites and everything else and citing about being in Lenaway County and the city of Adrian. This year, we're starting within the next couple of weeks, we're going to be starting to update our website more specifically to site selectors and businesses to take advantage of what we hope are going to be a whole lot of reshoring opportunities coming our way. Obviously, COVID exposed a lot of cracks in a lot of systems. And we think we can, we can all benefit from that. And then the last bullet point there is we work with and working with the city of Adrian and city of company have received a site readiness grant from the MADC to specifically market our industrial and technology part to site selectors and, and companies outside of Lenaway County and Michigan. Next slide, please. Second leg of our school, of the economic development school is work through our peer. We are giving businesses started. This is for, I don't know about human brain, but this is my favorite part, working with startups. It's a lot of fun. And I believe this is the most sustainable part of economic development. We can start with that. First gear down the center of the BAT, the Business Acceleration Team. That is a group we have every semester of college students, college interns. And we just finished up the summer internship and we actually had our first high school student intern. And the two interns we had this summer worked with a company that just raised half a million dollars of, of bank debt to start their business. So these folks do real work. They do customer discovery, they help the customer, the customer do customer discovery, work on the business plan, perform our financial statements, best practice visits, not best practice visits, but best practices for, for that particular company. Then if you want to go up to the Adrian to come to Smart Zone gear, that's one of the mechanisms that funds that team. We get small stipends every year from the Smart Zone to help fund the back team. The next gear down is the Lion Fund. We've helped create basically two angel funds in Lenaway County. Lion Fund One raised half a million dollars and made a mid over 300,000 of that amount. And Lion Fund Two is at what, two and a quarter million dollars now, Jim?
Yeah, two and a quarter million.
And looking to grow a little bit better, a little bit bigger. The point of these are to help not just startups, but maybe that, that first second stage company where they're still growing, maybe not completely bankable, but just do a little extra effort. And then go all the way to the right there, the Launch Lenaway. You all familiar with that one, Mark and Mary Murray started that out of the Armory. Basically, it's a program, they boiled business school down to 12 weeks, if you will, to help entrepreneurs sort of get a taste of everything from, you know, renewal profit and loss statement, you know, starting with business plan. You know, figuring out why do you want to do this? What's the best way to do to, to start this business? Is this a viable business? Do I want to be in it? Et cetera, et cetera. Am I an entrepreneur? It's a great program. We've participated in, I think, all three cohorts so far, as either, you know, lecturers or color commentators, two other lecturers. But it's definitely a wonderful program. Next slide, please. Here's the most important tool, a way of the economic development school, business retention and expansion. Every statistic you see says that, that, you know, the vast majority of new jobs, new investment in the community comes through the books and are already there. So we have, we, we have regular visits with companies throughout the county all year long. Always involving a local economic development partner, that city or village official, township official in those cases. The whole point is to build and maintain a relationship with that company, uncover their challenges and their opportunities, and then, and then provide the resources for them to take advantage of the opportunities or fix the challenges. Like I said, this is, we have 60 and 70 of these a year. Sometimes duplicate, you uncover a challenge or an opportunity and you go back and have several more visits to, to get everything cooking. But I believe this is sort of the most important part of our job. Next slide. Assistance during the pandemic. The state has put forward two relief funds to help small businesses through, through this pandemic. The first one we managed or we administered was March or April, that small business relief fund. Lenaway County was awarded $237,000, $238,000. We had 150 applications asking for $4.2 million of help. We were able to assist 21 companies. And then with the business start programs, the grant programs in the state that we're administering, this time we were awarded $793,000. Right now, we are sitting at 243 applications. Applications ended August 5th, we're processing them. $4.3 million in requests for, you know, $800,000 worth of funding. For the city of Adrian specifically, 108 of those applications were city businesses asking for, if it's made over $2 million. Obviously, there's some hurt out there and we're working to fix that. Next slide. I talked about this a little bit earlier. Our report card is too well, we put this, we do a five year report, report every year in our report card. I don't, don't need to go through and read this, but like you say, 11 startups over those last, those five years, 30 expansions, 10 attractions. Just so you know, for the city of Adrian, five of the startups were in Adrian, 11 of the expansions for Adrian and five of the attractions for Adrian. We've been down a little bit lower. You see that $270 million number of total investment in the five year period. 127 million, that was around your half, was in the city of Adrian. And then over to the right, you see a 2000 number and the various industry clusters that those came from. I think that is it for me. I'm all done. I think messed up a great.
Hi, it's, it's a real pleasure to speak with you tonight. If we could have the next slide, I'd appreciate it. And then next, please. So I am focused on the talent. The mission of Align Lenaway is to build a talent pipeline. There's lots of challenges and great opportunities for the county in our building of that. Why is talent a great focus? It's our, it's actually our number one economic development focus. It's because our current employers and site selectors and the folks that we talk to that would like to come into the county are all focused on the availability of talent. So it's not something Jim, Tim and I dreamed up. It's what we encounter in our business every day and it's the number one economic challenge really throughout the state, throughout the country, even internationally. So the Align Lenaway Group was put together to build a pipeline to sustain our local economy. And to do that, we know that you need a robust and deep talent pool, a lot of bench. Next slide, please. We are funding our effort mostly through the, about a million, $500,000 from these various departments. You'll notice that the, some are federal, some are state and some are local. So we really feel great about that because people are putting their funding behind us. They believe in it. The USDA is funding currently a grant in Adrian to help small business with small business development. We have Ben Negron involved with that and, and Chuck Chase and, and Bill Blackerby and myself. And of course, our team. We feel really good about that grant. It's for $38,000 for consulting, help these businesses expand what they're doing in terms of product or customer diversification. The Department of Labor Grant is $169,000, another competitive win for us for Lenaway County. And that is for our chemical industry. And we work with the ISD, Jack Townsley facilitates this for us. He's certified in this opportunity. And we are convening that grant and we are facilitating an opportunity for our chem, the chemical industry is very important to Lenaway County as a sector. is very important to Lenoir County as a sector and very important to Adrian. The M E D C has, uh, helped fund us with the, uh, Marshall Plan. The Marshall Plan is to really focus on certifications. Even before the governor, uh, had came out with her, we'd like to have sixty percent of our, of our citizens certified by the year two thousand and thirty. We are working on that. We're in the Marshall Plan with our higher education partners, our K-12 and the ISD. So the ISD wrote that grant and won that for us. We convene and facilitate that grant. And you'll see certification ladders come out of that. So kids can go from high school through higher ed and earn certifications. Most of our employers are focused on certified skills. And the last is a local millage. It's the career and technical education millage. Um, it is in conjunction with the Marshall Plan. The Marshall Plan, the state did not fund, um, actually the staff to work on the plan. They funded the money and said, here's your funding, but they didn't find any staff around. So we approached, uh, the C T E Millage and we won a grant last year and again this year to put navigators in the schools. Can I have the next, uh, uh, slide, please? This is where we are placing navigators. We're very innovative in our workforce development. We understand it has to be ground up. It has to be over a number of years. So we're in with the K through twelve systems. You see it. We're in with Adrian, Madison and Sand Creek as our pilot districts. And once we perfect the pilots, we intend to go to every, uh, every, uh, district in the county and work with them and work with their teachers and counselors. So we host, um, presentations by employers pre-COVID. Post-COVID, we're doing a lot of this online. So students can see, you know, that perennial question, why does this matter to me? Why do I need to learn this? The employers are saying, here's why you need to learn this. Here's the skills I need in my local facility. And we're also, uh, planning to take students and parents out to these facilities to sit down with these, uh, employers and find out about the skills. We have wonderful opportunities here in the county. And we really understand in, in five years of working on this, that the parents, and this is also a statewide observation from our peers, the parents are the least informed group of what good jobs are locally and what skills our employers are looking for. So we're really excited to be doing this. Next slide, please. Uh, you'll see Euclid circle in the bottom right-hand corner. So since COVID, we've gotten very innovative. At graduation time, we sent out, we actually hand-delivered this postcard from Align. It was, uh, a really great effort of our team and the ISD to connect graduates with, uh, local jobs because we have, like everyone else in the country right now, a group of students we call gap students. There were folks that were planning to go back to college or go to college and cannot afford that now because the funding is gone. Mom and dad's funding is gone. Maybe their savings are gone as they're getting through the pandemic. So we put this postcard in, in the graduate's hands in our three pilot districts and we are now putting these kinds of postcards online. So the next card you'll see will have jobs at Prometica, jobs at Gary Cliffs and, uh, and others. So Euclid is important. They're coming to Adrian. They're looking for fifty people. And we also are developing, uh, the chamber's been very helpful in developing an attraction package for people that want to come to Adrian and live. So it tells about the schools and the community. Really proud of that work and our collaboration. This last slide is, is kind of our journey, um, from classroom to work site and the different folks that help us, the teachers and counselors and the employers and working with the students to really broaden their awareness of local careers and local schools. So thank you again. And I think with that, we are ready for questions if there are any.
Next slide, please. So, Miss, Madam Mayor, I don't know if you want to take time now, but, uh, there's our contact information, but if we, we'd be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
I know it was a quick overview.
Mayor, I have a question if we can ask them at this time.
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I have two, so I'll just, I'll just put them on the floor. Uh, I'm not sure who the right person to ask it is. Um, Mr. Van Dorn, at the beginning of your presentation, you mentioned that, um, uh, I, I, the way I heard it was you, you weren't necessarily welcome in chambers or, or afforded the opportunities to come in there. I guess I'm trying to understand that as, as, as an organization that is invested in your organization, um, where the root of that is, because I think that needs to be broken down in some way, shape or form. Um, secondly, this whole presentation was exceptionally educational. You guys are doing a lot of great things. Most of the information was focused or, or, or centered around Lenoir, because I know that's your overall goal and mission. Um, I guess these, these two questions dovetail into each other is because I would like to have you guys back on a more regular basis, um, and, and really kind of narrow this down into all of the things or the activity that is Adrian-specific since we are relying on you now. So I don't know how you guys want to take that, but two points of, of why you were feeling less than welcome and then is it reasonable or, or is it, uh, would it be beneficial for both parties for you guys to come back on a more regular basis to, and tailor this down to Adrian focus?
Yep. Commissioner, two, two great questions there. First of all, um, we, normally we do, or all the other communities, we do go out to invest with us in the, in their partnership and, and funding, uh, uh, Lenoir now. And we go there annually to update them on what's happened in their particular community and they want to know that. We've offered that to Adrian City for, uh, years, uh, because we've, we've been doing that now for ten years, making sure that we get out there. And it's all, we just always been told, uh, that, uh, you know, it's not necessary. So I, I appreciate your question. Uh, we certainly would love to come back. We would, we'll plan on that if, uh, if you tell us to, uh, the, uh, administrator or mayor, whoever it is, uh, you know, that, uh, plan on, uh, coming back, uh, annually, uh, we, we would get ahold of them and, and schedule those and come in and give you an update on what's happened just in the city of Adrian. Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. It was very informative and, um, we were all very curious. We were, we were, I know that many wanted this presentation, um, just so that we can gain a better knowledge of where we can go together in the future. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Glad to be here.
At this time, we now have a presentation and excuse me Harmony, I know I'm going to slaughter your last name, by Harmony Fear Gomazal, the MSU Extension, Adrian Safe Neighborhoods.
Thank you. No, you did good with my name, Fear Gomazal. So, well, uh, thank you for having me. Uh, I do not have any slides tonight. I'm going to keep it brief, but thank you, Michelle, for sharing this invitation. I'm here to, uh, give you an update on the, uh, on a recent project that came out of the D D A's twenty nineteen strategic plan. Um, I am an educator for MSU Extension and I serve Southeast Michigan. My career is as an urban and regional planner and I work in land use and public engagement when it comes to my work at Extension. And it was my pleasure to partner with the D D A for the past couple of years to not only help with the strategic plan, but help with some of the outcomes of that. And the Adrian Safe Neighborhoods is part of that. Um, this is a project that started last December with a public kickoff at the Carriage House. Um, and over the past many months, we have, uh, worked on some public engagement surveys and photo voice, uh, projects. And, um, we are at a point now in the project where we are coming to the end and we have a, uh, special invitation for you coming up the end of this month. First, I want to, uh, thank Dusty Steele at the Adrian D D A and Chief Emmerich, uh, with the police and also Greg Elliott for serving on the steering committee and Michelle Dewey as well with help, uh, promoting this project. So MSU and MSU Extension are very grateful, uh, to those four partners. Also, uh, we were able to garner twenty-five thousand dollars in grant funding from a public policy research grant at MSU to pay for the time and effort going into all the engagement and mapping, uh, and, um, policy recommendations for this project at Adrian and for a project similar to it in Howell and also Albion. So I'm actually working with three, uh, similar sized communities doing this crime prevention through environmental work. So the purpose is really, um, to, in order to create and preserve great places in Adrian and to reduce crime through future changes to our streetscapes, yards, sidewalks, roadways, lighting, landscaping, access, et cetera. So crime prevention through environmental design not only has to do with engaging the public to understand the perception of safety in the downtown and in our neighborhoods, but also look at actual crime data and compare it with how our community is actually designed and come up with changes, recommendations for changes after looking at that. So crime prevention through environmental design has everything to do with looking at surveillance, uh, throughout our city, uh, that's lighting, um, visibility, maintenance cameras, things like that through the downtown and in our neighborhoods. And then also, uh, accessibility. How can we make criminal offenders feel like it's too risky for them to commit a crime in the areas of the city? We want to limit their free access to properties, neighborhoods and to our downtown. We do that through various fencing, landscaping, signage, et cetera, territoriality, having that sense of ownership and community, uh, throughout the city, through landscaping and maintenance, decorations and artwork, signage. All this can do a lot to reduce crime, uh, throughout the city. And again, it just gets back to having quality environments where everyone lives and works and visits and shops. Uh, and so well-maintained yards and street sidewalks, parks and trails and building facades. All of this works together to prevent crime. And it also has a lot to do with place making. And Adrian has a history of making great places, preserving your already great places. This is a transformational type policy work, uh, that we're doing here, um, in the downtown and throughout the neighborhoods. So, um, what we hope to accomplish, uh, at the end of August, uh, MS, the MSU team, which involves faculty and criminal justice and, uh, planning, designing, construction and interior design, uh, we will hopefully have some recommended policies for the city leaders to consider for reducing crime in a prioritized way. So we have focused areas on where to focus changes first and how to promote pedestrian and vehicular circulation that actually inhibits crime and just promoting public safety with quality environmental design. So we have all these policy recommendations taking shape right now because we have been looking at the crime data, um, in every neighborhood and in the downtown and doing a geographic analysis of where crime is happening and comparing it to the built environment. We're also looking at that public engagement. So surveys have been going out, uh, pretty much since January. And so, uh, we're still pushing out the survey on our website. I'll give you that address in a moment, um, to get people to report on their perceptions of how safe they feel in the downtown, how safe they feel in their neighborhood, what are the levels of neighborliness that are occurring, what are some great places and great activities happening, everything to do with the quality environment and place making and, and asking about, uh, criminal activity as well and their perceptions of safety, personal safety. Photo voice is something that has been being pushed out since January as well. And that's a link on our website that I will give you in a moment. Everyone in the city is asked to submit two photos online. It's very simple. One is a picture of something you're grateful for in the city and another is something you're not quite so grateful for, but could be changed, uh, to make better. And then to tell the stories behind the two photos. Very simple. Everyone with a phone can do it. Uh, and we're just asking to tell that public story through photo voice. And again, that we're still collecting pictures and surveys all through August. And I think the MSU team wants it to go even further. So, um, again, that link I'll share in a minute. And again, the policy recommendations that are coming along, uh, will be, um, given to the steering committee this week and then shared with leadership and the public next week. So I do have, uh, let me make sure of the link to the website here. Uh, we do have a Google Sites website that is active and has everything you need to know about this project on it. Uh, the survey link, uh, the photo voice link and all additional information and updates on what's coming out of the MSU team. And I put that link right in the chat. Again, this is for leadership and public, of course. So the link is in the chat. And then also we have been on Facebook for a couple of months now. Since COVID came around, we decided we had to flip this entirely online. So we created the website. We created a Facebook page and I'm going to just quickly put that Facebook link up here in the chat as well. Feel free to like it, share it. Michelle, thank you so much for sharing what we put up there, uh, every week. It's been, um, great to reach hundreds of people, uh, who could hopefully take the survey and to the, do the photo voice pictures as well through that Facebook. So that Facebook link is in there now as well. Um, and with that, I want to call your attention again to this postcard that's in front of you, online roundtable. Uh, if you could please save the date, August twenty-seventh at four P M. Uh, that will be our final presentation, open house, roundtable, as it were, uh, for the public and also for city leadership. Uh, and this is going to be interactive and online and it won't be just a lecture for an hour and a half or two hours. It's going to be, uh, broken up with lots of activities because, and the MSU team and the steering committee really would like feedback from you on how to focus our efforts in crime reduction, uh, through changes in design in the future. And so we do hope that you can let me know and R S V P is always helpful, not required, but it's helpful. There's my email there, gomazalh@msu.edu. And of course, our friends around Lenoir County are welcome as well. Uh, we're hoping that this crime prevention through environmental design effort can be, it can be replicated, uh, in any, uh, community, uh, in Lenoir County. And it is a exceptional way to engage the public and look at, uh, community planning as well and downtown development. So I hope to see you there on the twenty-seventh and, uh, I look forward to your feedback. So thank you very much for having me tonight.
Thank you, Harmony. Moving on to the regular agenda, the following ordinances are on a first reading only. Ordinance twenty dash zero zero five is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend section fifty-eight dash one eighty-six of chapter fifty-eight of the Adrian City Code, public consumption or possession of alcoholic liquor. At this time, I'm going to ask our city attorney, Tamara's Henigan, to please provide a description and introduction to this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor Heath. This is probably one of the simplest amendments that we've ever had. It simply adds language. Um, we already have an ordinance in place that prohibits drinking alcohol or consuming alcohol in public. And due to the recent movement towards putting up a social drinking district, we are adding language that would make the social drinking district exempt to that ordinance.
Thank you. Moving on to ordinance twenty dash zero zero six is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend section sixty-two dash forty of chapter sixty-two of the Adrian City Code, use of parks and chapter sixty-two of the Adrian City Code by adding section sixty-two dash forty-four camping. Again, I'm going to ask city attorney Tamara's Henigan to please provide that introduction to this ordinance.
Thank you. This is the ordinance that we discussed in pre-meeting, but for those who are not able to join us in pre-meeting, I'll just recap very quickly. Um, this would amend section sixty-two forty of our city code for use of parks and it will change the hours instead of the park being closed from eleven P M. to six A M. It would be closed from sunset to sunrise. And it will also add, um, authority over the public trails under the parks ordinance because the trails are part of the park and connect the parks together. And then it adds an entirely new section, um, sixty-two dash forty-four on camping that, um, creates some prohibitions on camping in public places unless you have a specific permit for a special event and camping on private property unless you have consent from the owner.
Ordinance twenty dash zero zero seven is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend section three point one of article three of the city of Adrian zoning ordinance and the zoning map to which references therein may, to the extent of deleting the property at one fifteen East Sienna Heights Drive from our four single-family residential district and including the same in the B two community business district. At this time, I'm going to ask Greg Elliott to please provide that introduction and description.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is, uh, a request to rezone property that is, uh, slightly east of Main Street. It runs between Sienna Heights and Albert, behind the Battery Wholesale and, uh, the proposed Black Swan Coffee Shop, for lack of a better term. Being requested by the owner of Black Swan. being requested by the owner of Black Swan, who has also acquired this property. I believe his intent would be to have parking for the coffee house back there. Although, and considering the B2 zoning district, you have to, our business district, you have to consider all the options. Property in that zoning district might, but to.
Ordinance 20-008 is a first reading and introduction of an ordinance to amend section 3.1 of article 3 of the City of Adrian zoning ordinance and the zoning map to which references therein made to the extent of deleting the property at 307 East Beecher Street from the B2 Community Business District and including the same in the P1 Parking District. At this time, I will again ask Greg Elliott to please give the introduction to this ordinance.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a portion of the former, I believe it was called Mighty Motors property, Don Lofton's property, where he used car lot and asking to take a piece of that, which is roughly in the northwestern part of the site and rezon that to parking district. So, that is the remainder of his B2 property will no longer touch residential. The significance of that is that there are a lot of facilities are not allowed to, where they contain ancillary, are not allowed to touch family residential property. And so, this would separate the remainder of this parcel from residential property by creating a parking district. Parking districts are districts that are where the only, essentially the only allowed use or only allowed principal uses is parking of motor vehicles. They're meant to be accessory to other zoning districts that generate the property.
Thank you. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution R20-147 is from administration. It is a resolution to approve the official logos for the City of Adrian Social District and approve the naming of the district as the Downtown Adrian Refreshment Area. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Support, help.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor Heath, I have a question.
Commissioner Roberts.
I'm a little confused. What, we have two different logos. We're voting on both of, to approve both of them? Because they're going to be used separately in some way?
Or in the alternative, I think the idea is to, I mean, the only distinction is that the one has the D, partly follow average, but I, yeah, I think the request is to allow them to be used in the alternative, do identify the district.
Okay, so they, the business could choose one or the other.
Yes, on cups and then we will also be placing those on our signs that we have to create, demarcate the district.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Halt. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-148 is from administration. It is a resolution to recommend applications of businesses for social district permits for consideration for approval by the Michigan Liquor Control Commission. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Strayer.
Support, Roberts.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Roberts. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-149 is from Parks and Engineering Services. It is a resolution to award a bid for pedestrian crosswalk upgrades. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Gauss. Support, Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Gauss with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please. You're muted, Robin.
I'm sorry, Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-150 is from Community Development. It is a resolution to amend the fiscal year 2020-21 budget to reallocate funds for an additional code enforcement officer position. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Watson.
Or, Strayer.
Are there any public comments? Are there any commissioner comments? I have a motion from Commissioner Watson with a second from Commissioner Strayer. Roll call, please.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Mr. Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
Resolution R20-151 is from the city attorney. It is a resolution to approve amended agreements for legal services with the Lenawee County Prosecutor's Office and Henigan and Associates, PLLC. May I have a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move to adopt the resolution, Strayer.
Support, Gauss.
Are there any public comments?
Mayor Heath, I would just like to advise the commission that this afternoon, we did receive a signed copy of the contract from the Lenawee County Prosecutor's Office, signed by the prosecutor and the county commission. So, they have approved all of the agreements.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Are there any commissioner comments?
Mayor, if I may.
Yes, go ahead.
So, so, I mean, two pieces of our puzzle are coming together right now. And I guess my expectation, this is going to be an area that we're going to hold in high standard. So, we allocated resources now to, we kind of, yeah, we just shuffled our resources and made it very clear from the commission standpoint what our plans are. So, so I'm excited to have the Blight Enforcement Officer, the code enforcement officer coming online as well as having Attorney Henigan coming online with the focus of code enforcement. There's some scary stuff going on in our city that we need to toughen up on and hopefully this is the first giant step that we, we bring our city back in this, in this realm.
We will send.
I have a motion from Commissioner Strayer with a second from Commissioner Gauss. Roll call, please.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Watson.
Yes.
Commissioner Strayer.
Yes.
Mr. Gauss.
Yes.
Mayor Heath.
Yes.
Mr. Halt.
Yes.
Resolution adopted by unanimous vote.
There are miscellaneous reports in your packet. Any comments on these reports? Now it is public comment. Just to reiterate, there is a three-minute time limit and for the record, please state your name and address.
Mayor Heath, David Thomas, 4511 Marathon Heights Court.
Go ahead.
I just want to say thank you to the commission, to Michelle Dewey, Greg Elliott for taking swift action on establishing our DARA district and I'll be happy to continue working with city staff, DPW, in regards to signage to make sure that they're clear and concise and also making sure that we are figuring out the appropriate trash receptacles to establish at local bars and restaurants as well, making sure that we don't have a lot of maintenance to be concerned about. But I just want to say thank you all for your efforts and I appreciate everything that you guys done to fast track everything. So, I just, my compliments to you, to the city, to the commission and everybody at City Hall for doing such a great job in establishing our DARA district. Thank you.
Hello?
Go ahead.
Mayor, this is Jim Berryman. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, I'm very good. Tried to get this in within three minutes. I'm really calling for two reasons tonight. And it's, one is for, because of COVID-19, obviously this year, many events have had to be, had to be canceled and many things that have gone on in the community just won't happen for, hopefully, hopefully it'll happen again next year. But I wanted to say that some things will continue and I'm bringing this up tonight because the timing and commitments need to happen now. They've happened over the last month or so, but they're happening now. And I want to thank you, Mayor, the city commission, our city administrator, Mr. Elliott, the county, and the city-county Christmas tree and Comstock Christmas River Walk. I mention those again because the, the timing and commitments of those need to be made out for them to happen in the fall. I'd like to thank Richard and Kevin at Plainwave for once again donating a 65-foot Norwegian spruce or the city-county Christmas tree, which will be cut and delivered on November 12th to the front lawn of the county courthouse. So, I want to thank the city and the county and everyone involved. And I will say at this time that I, I want to mention that the partnerships with the city from individuals, businesses, organizations that make these things possible, we will bring that up. I will bring that up at a later date because I want to make sure all of those individuals, all those businesses and organizations get credit for making these things happen. And you know, the, when I met with each and every organization, business, individual and they said, not only do we want to do this, we feel this year we really have to do this. Community needs to see events continue. And, and so I would also, I know I see my time with Tamara's at going. I also want to make sure that later on, we will mention that some individuals and organizations and businesses have come together and made a donation to Comstock Christmas River Walk, a donation of significance, a donation that will certainly highlight the park for years to come. So, with that, let me just say, you know, this community, the generosity no longer surprises me, but it continues to give me great pride in the community in which we live. You very much.
Hearing no more public comment, I'm going to move on. Are there any commissioner comments? I would like to say, I'm sorry if you could hear a noise in the background. They were cleaning City Hall and I had my door open tonight. So, I'm sorry that there was a vacuum noise and everything in the background. That's the fun of Zoom, so. Hearing no commissioner comments. May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move to adjourn, Watson.
Support, Roberts.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.